Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yeah.
Ms. Perkins here. Mr. Walter.
Here.
All right. Counsel, you received the minutes from the November twenty-fourth meeting. Have any comments or motion?
I couldn't find my copy.
The union?
Yeah. And it may be unique because I usually will. I screen mine with my cellphone and I could have accidentally deleted it because of all the spamming that was in there.
If everyone else saw, we have no other motion. Motion passed minutes for November twenty-fourth. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Upstate.
You also received the current expenses. Questions?
See, we paid a lot of outstanding notes.
Full on in the heavy game.
I'd make a motion to pass the expenses submitted.
Also.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's, Renee, you have it?
No.
Chief?
Just have a couple items. Christmas under the clock went well this year, except for one exception. There was a semi truck that went down Church Street and hit the guardrail down at Church and Jackson. So first off, I want to thank Officer Theron Prather for noticing the semi parked out on Schillakothen going to investigate. And on top of that, there was an additional citizen who called in the complaint to say that they actually hit the guardrail. So while he was out with him, he got that information. So that's good. So hopefully we'll get all the information back for insurance purposes. So the village won't be out any money on that. Shop on the Cop program was this past weekend. It went great. All the Union County agencies participated. Each agency had three children from the raffle ticket sales. Again, thanks Officer Prather for selling those raffle tickets. And we went Saturday morning. There was an escort from the fire department in Marysville, full line of police and fire trucks all the way to the Walmart, where they spent their time picking out their gifts. So it was a, it was a good time.
Did you have any kids ride?
All but one that I know of. One of ours was a four-year-old and he didn't want to ride because he wanted to be with his mom. Then when he got there, he saw how much fun it was and wanted to ride on the way back. But we didn't do it on the way back, so he was quite upset. So, and then I also attended the Union County Advisory Board meeting. A date has been set for the seven X platform switch for Marx radios. That's going to be March the first. So that's all I had to report.
Any questions? Thank you. All right, Mr. Trump.
Chief, your procession is on Facebook if anybody wants to see it as they're coming into the, that Walmart parking lot. It was pretty cool. I wanted to provide everybody with an update for the West Avenue Perry Pike Route forty-two intersection improvements project. Spoke, well, the project costs continue to escalate and therefore our contribution is increasing. At this time, the project is in the right-of-way acquisition phase, which is progressing pretty slowly. But this will be a big driver of the increased costs for the village. While the state handles the negotiation process, for the acquisition of those properties, the village is fully responsible for the total cost of the purchase of the property, not during the, these classes. Not the attorney fees and all of those subsequent fees, but the actual purchase of the property, we are wholly responsible for. So as those costs start to come in, they're a little bit larger than we expected. So just, just wanted to make everybody aware of that.
Well, and, uh, that's a key point. Because if, if our owners are trying to get as much as they possibly can for that property, then that comes back on us. We have to pay it. Let's hope they're all being reasonable.
How much did we originally anticipate that would cost us?
I believe we have a hundred and sixty thousand budget, Bob.
One fifty.
One fifty.
We started several years ago thinking it was going to be one hundred thousand.
What are we anticipating now?
We don't know. We, those, they're still in that negotiation phase with the majority of the property owners.
Those three of them?
There's five or six of them, I believe.
Is that wiring west?
I think five.
And adding a traffic light there or what?
Adding a light?
Turn lane.
Turn lanes, okay. Just, turn lanes just on forty-two or on?
All directions.
All directions.
We also continue to work with Mr. Ballantyne on the property exchange. Mr. Lafayette is handling, we're going to be doing a warranty deed for both sides. And he's working on getting that all drafted and should be finished up in a couple of weeks.
We'll have to have a survey at that point, right?
We have a survey that Paul believes we can use. It was when we initially were starting to do that declaratory judgment, we had a survey done. Renee and I met with Rock Mill Consultants for an introductory conversation. It went very well. They're excited to dig in and see how they can help us. And they're going to do some homework and then get back to us. But I look, I look forward to working with them. I'm pretty excited what they can bring to the table. We have some issues with the water tower contractor finishing up a small punch-out list. The biggest issue is the fire department's radio antenna that sits atop our tower is not working since they reinstalled it. We are attempting to work out the details with the contractor and try to come to some resolution on that. I attended the Economic Development Seminar, ED four-one-one, on Friday. I'd like to thank the Madison County CIC. They picked up my registration to attend that conference, so appreciate their support on that. And I didn't see it on the agenda, but we need to discuss the green space for the Plain City Commons Meadows. Just continuation of our discussion from last week. I believe I, you should all receive some additional information that you had asked for from last council meeting, so. That's all.
Any questions? Right, President Protim and Parks.
Nothing for President Protim. And just a reminder, the parks will meet January seventh at six-thirty here.
Thank you. Ready for you.
Just responded to some public records requests and I don't think there was much else that we had going on. But I think we're just getting, actually, I was helping Kevin getting some of the contracts ready for next year, at least being ahead of the curve. So when we jumped in, jumped into the new year, we're ready to go with the catering contracts and things of that nature for pool. We're ready to go.
And he just told us you're working on the Ballantyne paper.
Yes, Ballantyne paperwork is in process and hopefully we'll have it done next week, so we'll be able to close it. What we're doing is it, it just, we're going to do general warranty deed exchanges because frankly, I don't know how he would want to be able to transfer the property without a general warranty deed on the exchange. Because somebody keeps selling the property, obviously, to a commercial buyer and they're not going to want to take it on a court claim deed, so.
ECA?
We have nothing going on, but I did meet with Brad Ellis and he said he will be happy to renew this position on the board.
So I think you guys need to take action on that then, right? So someone should nominate him again, make a motion, put him on ECA again.
This performance, I presume, was acceptable and passed.
Why make a motion to nominate or keep or?
Restate.
Restate Brad Ellis to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll say it now.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
I, I would say here that that, he's been on for a very long time. And I think he does do a good job. I don't know if that's ever something you guys want to look at, but if you do, you should do it way ahead of December if you're thinking about somebody else.
So he's on for, his new appointment was for three years, correct?
I don't know.
Two, I think it's.
No, longer than that. Because we wrote, because they, we have to have a new member for a year.
Okay. But he, he starts out with the maximum.
Yes, yes. Three minutes, so that there's a type of four years?
I believe it's five years. Because we have five members and they're asking a new one up every year for the, for our ordinances.
So five years term. Do we have the terms other people on the phones and services or the phone?
I think I saw, you know.
Yeah, I can, I can call them.
Okay. All right, Kevin, CIC?
Um, I don't know.
First one, I mean.
Nothing, man.
Fine.
Me, just me.
This.
Either, it was nine.
Bob, can you say?
Yes. I, I'll step away from my seat. I, I happen to be a volunteer for Upco and presently serving as treasurer and I have a presentation for the village. Mayor?
You gave me your name and I couldn't tell what that, what word was.
Upco sponsoring a clock renovation fundraising effort. It was announced at the Christmas under the clock on Saturday. The goal was for Upco to, to spur on a fundraising effort and hopefully collect about thirty thousand dollars for the benefit of the clock restoration. To start that, the Board of, or, yeah, Board of Directors for Upco has authorized a two thousand dollar grant to, to the village as a way of starting it.
Great, thank you. Bob, did you hear how the auction went?
I'm pretty good, but I haven't finished tallying everything. There was a good turnout, the Christmas under the clock. It was windy and cold, made it colder. But it was a good event, as Chief said. And always appreciate all the effort that goes into that. There's a lot of work that goes into any of the events that are held in the village and Upco does a great job. Always soliciting for volunteers for that.
All right. So moving on, we failed to put David Kell on the agenda, although he had asked us if he could be. So Madison County CIC represented.
Okay, okay.
Want to address counsel?
Sure. Real quick, every year per the Ohio Board of Supervisors, we require to give an annual report. It's written, but I'm also going around to our different communities to just kind of give an update on what we've achieved this past year and what we're looking at moving forward. For me will be, is the strategic plan that we developed. We put together in April of twenty fourteen. Kind of details what our goals and objectives and how we plan to achieve those, those items within that document. And I'll get to that in a, in a few minutes. Just to update, just kind of give you the real numbers real quick. We've had five project wins this year come through, with, come through our office and that we've worked on. Jobs committed in Madison County, four hundred and sixty-one. Jobs retained, that means jobs did not leave our community. We were able to keep, work to keep them here. Two hundred and seventy-nine. We've had real property investment of seventy-seven million and total square footage that has been built or will be built within the county is one point four million. Business visits, retention and expansion visits. These are very important because where, it gives us an opportunity to look at the companies within our community and understand how they're doing and what their opportunities and challenges are. And, and actually, you know, businesses really appreciate it and it's something that they, they encourage, that interaction with our community. We've had twenty-three and we hope to reach twenty-five by the end of the year. The strategic plan, well, first, I also wanted to, and I should have started off with this. One of the things I've heard probably myself on and our organization on is that we're, we're working to strengthen the, the bond and our relationships with our local communities and that includes Plain City. Been working closely with Kevin, the mayor, on a variety of different projects and been working with Upco on downtown and just the overall, you know, making opportunities come to, to Plain City. And we'll continue to do that this next year and I look forward to working with you all on that moving forward. The strategic plan, we focused on four items that we, we kind of came, came up with within our three, three meetings. Decide to focus, focus on workforce, infrastructure, marketing, and identifying funding for both projects in a variety of communities as well as within our own organization. Workforce, I'm not sure if anybody had a chance to read, Madison Press recently. We've worked with our local companies and our local school districts to develop a, a, a program called the Madison County Workforce Readiness Credential. What we're going to be doing is working to prepare high school seniors for the workplace, whether they, whether they decide to go into the workplace right away or if they just, you know, decide to work their way through school or go to school and then into the workplace. We want to, we've created a program where if, if, we've, we've developed a set of criteria that businesses want to see regarding soft skills, life skills. Because what we've been hearing constantly when, when we went out to talk to businesses where we are looking for people with the right attitude and the right, the right soft skills, workplace skills needed to be quality employee. And right now, we don't have that within our community. We don't have people who show up, work on time. We don't have people who can pass a drug test, that can stay off the cellphone. And that's just unfortunate, but it's, that's the reality of our community. So what we want, wanted to do was focus on either the adult workers or the, the students that would be entering the workforce. And, and at this point in time, it seemed best to work with high school seniors. So we have created, with that criteria, if a student meets this criteria on voluntary basis and, and is able to submit a packet that we, we give to them, to me upon graduation, they will receive a certificate that says I'm workforce-ready in Madison County. And what we've done is we've worked with our local companies to where they've agreed that if a student was to submit this, uh, this certificate with an application or resume, they'd be guaranteed an interview with that company. So what that does, and there are right now twelve participating companies. I anticipate probably, probably another, another three signing on at least over the next probably month or so. What that does is it gives students the confidence as they enter the workplace that I'm going to, if I get this credential, I will have opportu, an opportunity for an interview with twelve, maybe fifteen companies within our community. And I can be a quality employee and a competent employee within a business here within Madison County. On the flip side, what, what happens with the businesses is they, if they see that somebody submits a certificate with an application or resume, they understand that they're going to get somebody who has, you know, met these different criteria, has proven that they have taken the initiative to earn this certificate and be a, 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 what they would perceive as a competent and quality employee within our community. So we've had a lot of positive feedback from both our businesses and our educators and we're going to roll that program out here after the winter, winter break of twenty fifteen. So we're really excited about that. Infrastructure, we're going to be working with different communities. What I didn't have when I came into this position was a, just an understanding of what, you know, each community had when it came to water, sewer, gas, electric, fiber, which are really five things that a company or a site selection consultant looks for when they're trying to find dirt, ground that they're, they want to, you know, build on and invest in. You know, we've, I've been, I've talked to quite a few site selection consultants. They said if you don't have water, sewer, gas, electric, and fiber to a site, you know, don't bother bringing it to us until you get that. And, and that's just the reality of things that, these days. And, and, and they want that site, you know, ready to go, shovel-ready. And so we're working with the different community, I'm working with the different communities to gather that data to figure out what we have currently at different sites and what's available and what needs to be done to make sites within a community marketable so we can bring businesses to Plain City, Mount Sterling, London, our, our townships everywhere in Madison County that makes sense. So that's one of our, our goals. Marketing, there hasn't been a lot of marketing done. We're going to be developing a marketing plan, looking for partners to market what we have within our community here. Really, when we got to that together as a group, we had both people from the inside, people that may be living outside of the community that do work here. And, and overall, the consensus was we're, we're close to Columbus, we have a lot of assets. But when people look at Madison County, they see, you know, they see the sticks. You know, they see, they don't think that we are close to Columbus, you know, like the Plain City. How close you are to Dublin, they don't see that. So what we need to do is up our marketing and really increase exposure and really let, let the right people know what we have within our community here. So we're going to be doing that. We're going to really ramp that up here in twenty fifteen moving forward. And lastly, funding, you know, CIC, we're always looking at ways to increase our resources internally. We do rely on both public and private donations and we appreciate the communities and their, what they're able to put into our, our CIC. But we're going to be looking for more resources to improve our marketing, to improve the workforce readiness credential that we've developed. You know, and really just enhance the, my abilities within the organization, the organization itself. Also, I'm developing a booklet, what I'll call booklet, booklet or packet that will list a number of, um, uh, different funding sources for different projects, whether it be for water and sewer, whether it be for, you know, equipment or planning for different projects. You know, we talked about the downtown and maybe there's a, a significant project within Plain City that may need some planning done. There are jo, there are different funds out there through USDA or other different sources. And what I want to do is, and then I'm working on, is putting together a booklet that has all that information there. So Kevin can turn to it right away and say, okay, we have Project X and we need, you know, X amount of dollars and, you know, may be able to determine what program that we may know of, may, may be aware of, or maybe, but maybe we're not aware of, would have, you know, that may have dollars to put towards a, a project. So that should be ready to roll out here in early twenty fifteen. I mean, I'm talking hopefully early January, so, so we can, you know, have that information right there at our fingertips. Just, again, I appreciate, you know, the, the support that we've received in the village and, and I look forward to continue to working with you. And I know we're excited about some opportunities with downtown that we're looking to really capitalize on hopefully and, and, you know, continue to work on enhancing our, our community here.
Thank you.
Allison Armijo, maybe this is on the spot. Can't answer, I don't know, but, um, what kind of leads do you get through?
So quite honestly, when it comes to facilities, we get both buildings and, uh, leads asking for facilities, existing facilities that are vacant or land. Buildings, I almost always have to throw out because we don't have any available facilities really. There's about a hundred thousand square foot facility down in Mount Sterling that we have available, but, you know, you're typically looking for seventy thousand square feet or more. Sometimes we have forty to fifty and, and automatically most like have to just set those aside. Now, sometimes they come back and say, well, we couldn't find facilities within the Columbus region or even Ohio. We're going to open it back up to land. And at that point in time, I'm able to submit different sites that are in our database for those leads that come in. So those come through the state, or Columbus Twenty Twenty, our Regional Economic Development Organization. And it does, we, I have sites within the database and one of those sites is the Ballantyne, Ballantyne property. We also receive, receive leads into our office, working with a, a group that's looking to, they're looking for either land or a building within the Madison County Western Columbus region. So I'm actively looking for different opportunities to, or different facilities or, or pieces of land that may be able to accommodate that. So, you know, we've received probably about, I would say, in the low twenties, about, more than that of total leads, but ones that we qualify for, about twenty, low twenties. And again, I mean, I have to toss out immediately the existing facility leads because we just don't have anything that would need. And then the facility down Mount Sterling has a lot of cleanup and needs, needs a lot of cleanup and, and, you know, renovation costs and things like that. So, and we're working with them on that facility. So if you want, if, if you guys want to kind of get an idea of what kind of, what the leads are asking for, I'm more than happy to forward some, you know, just kind of old leads along just so you can take a look and see, you know, if there may be interest. I, I'd be more than happy to do that. I can just funnel through, Kevin? I've sent to you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I just.
Mayor.
If I may, just comment, working with David over the last, you've been there.
It's only been a year.
We actually, the Board of Directors just approved David's employment contract for another year. So we're excited to have him and the things that he's done. He talked about the Workplace Readiness Initiative. We had a representative from, uh, where was she from? Josh Mandel's office stop and they were extremely impressed with the program that was put together. And this was actually a brainchild of, of David's, so the work that he's put into that. We've been told that over the next ten years Honda will lose fifty percent of its workforce to retirement. So they need to backfill all of those positions. And having workforce-ready employees to fill that is, is huge for not only Honda, but all of the suppliers that we have in the region. So appreciate all your hard work on that. And he's also, and he does a lot of the backwork for us and trying to put a lot of things together that, that goes unnoticed. So thanks for your assistance and.
We also plan to address tips in January.
Okay.
So we'll be starting that process.
Awesome.
And David is helping us with the potential grant through Frontier. And they did, I don't know if we told you, that extend that application period until March, which gave us.
Thankfully, yes.
A little bit of time to make that happen. So, yeah, we appreciate all your time.
Great. Glad to help.
Thanks for telling me.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so we have old business. We have a second reading of resolution nineteen fourteen. Please officer wage increase.
I should do a third and second reading in nineteen fourteen.
Ms. Davis. Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
No.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Upstain.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
And the second reading of resolution twenty fourteen, chief wage increase.
Move it back, second reading of twenty fourteen.
Also.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
No.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
And the second reading of resolution twenty-one fourteen.
Do you want to stop on that?
Oh. Sorry. I missed it. Oh. You're talking about the.
Yeah.
Yes. You have forwarded a revised resolution. Has changed enough that we need to start the process over or?
Yeah, we have to start it up.
Okay, I didn't know if it. The revised resolution, the first one had, did not have the compensation for. The revised resolution, um, the first one had, did not have a compensation for, um, I know, car coming up, yes, thank you.
For the village administrator.
For the administrator. And so the revised one that was forwarded to you does have that. So if you, um, are willing to start over with that.
Can I ask you a question? Um, the, the car allowance was in the approved preliminary budget, uh, four hundred dollars a month.
All right.
So it was a matter of record, can we not simply by vote amend and pass the second reading?
I guess initially when we were first passed, when twenty-one fourteen first came up for his first reading, which would have been two weeks ago, did you guys have the understanding that the auto?
It wasn't twenty-one four, oh, yeah, twenty-one fourteen, I'm sorry.
Yeah, when it first came up two weeks ago for first reading, did you guys have the understanding that the auto allowance was part of it?
I, I assumed it was since it was part of the budget.
If you guys passed it with, if you passed the first reading with the belief that that was what was included, and again, these resolutions have a lot of text in there.
But it doesn't spell it out in the resolution, we will be.
Well, this one it does spell it out, the original one that was voted on, two weeks ago it didn't, um, you know.
But yeah, amending.
I don't think technically you can, I hate to say that.
Well, then we can always look at the, um, uh, the next meeting. Uh, we could look at it for a second reading and, or maybe amend it to be as an emergency so it goes into effect.
You can do it.
Cause I don't wanna see another special meeting for, for that this year.
No, I understand. Yeah, I'm, again, I didn't know that that was gonna be an issue. But I don't, I'm not comfortable saying that we can just pass it with change in the language of it.
Okay, so this would be a first reading.
Of twenty-one fourteen.
Of twenty-one fourteen.
Can you say number, we keep it?
Oh.
Or do you want me to do a new number?
Just give it a new number.
After that.
Yeah.
It's twenty-four fourteen, is the new number.
Motion to pass the, uh, first reading of twenty-four fourteen.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kizer.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
No.
Mr. Moore.
Yeah.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Okay, then we have, um, second reading, resolution twenty-two fourteen, fiscal officer wage increase.
Motion to pass the second reading of twenty-two fourteen.
Second.
Ms. Davis.
No.
Mr. Kizer.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
No.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
No.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Yes. Second reading of resolution twenty-three fourteen, public works wage increase.
Motion to pass the second reading of twenty-three fourteen.
All second.
Ms. Davis.
No.
Mr. Kizer.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
No.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
No.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Yes. All right, and, and why don't we go back to the green space at Meadows?
Yeah, I just, I'd be happy to answer any further questions you guys had. As mentioned, I sent out the, uh, additional requests that you had for some research with, um, maintenance costs and a couple other bullet points that I considered after our last meeting.
If we take this property over, do we have to abide by the maintenance that they had in their, our property now? So we would not have to.
Well, yeah, I mean, they're, they're homeowners, they're, the homeowners association would be basically giving us the property. Um, and I don't think by doing that that we would be responsible for maintaining according to what they originally had, they're giving it away. It's no longer theirs, so I don't think we would, we wouldn't have to abide by their covenants within their homeowners association agreement.
So therefore we just have to mow it every now and then?
Right, and we do have village ordinances at any sidewalks or adjacent to that. We, because it's public property, we would have to maintain those as well.
The, the plat was approved with that being as set aside as green space and handled by the homeowners association. How do we amend, I mean, can we amend the plat by accepting this?
I don't think we'd do, well, I don't think we'd necessarily be amending the plat because the plat would be calling for it to be green space. It would be, it would still be, the use would be the same. So we're talking about the plats, it's a planned, uh, development and so the use would remain the same as far as the plat's concerned. The ownership may have changed. Now, if we're gonna change the use, then I would say, yeah, we'd have to change the plat.
Kevin, what were your numbers again, like seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred dollars? I remember going through the email, but I didn't print it. Oh, yearly maintenance is three thousand.
Now, that includes, as Ms. Davis mentioned, the, the level of, of maintenance that it's, is occurring currently.
The other thought is that, you know, anytime you make these kind of decisions, it can set a precedent going forward for other entities to want the same thing.
Do we have any currently, do we have any other ones? Need green space?
Mm-hmm, yes.
We talked about that last time and we didn't think that this was precedent, presidential in the sense that each one is unique.
I mean, it is not binding. I mean, it certainly is within the discretion of council to take what they want or don't take it at any given time, but you're inviting.
Exactly, that's.
You're inviting the citizens to have a, a, an understanding that they're gonna be treated differently. I can, I, staff's position on this is we would recommend that we not accept this. And in talking with, um, the attorney, um, and it's, it's their full intent to, to remove themselves from any maintenance costs. And that burden then would fall on, on the village. With the, with the added, um, maintenance involved, labor, uh, time material, would be difficult with, with the staff that we have currently. Um, and, uh, we would recommend that we not accept this.
I think the, um, the big green space in Copperfield, which is larger than what we're looking over at the Commons. And if we would say yes to the Commons, how would we say no to the people in Copperfield if they came and wanted the same thing? How would we base that? I mean, I wouldn't wanna have to, to defend it.
Just throwing my two cents into it, you know, it's not my policy decision I'm making here, but I'm just kinda throwing this in there. Basically, what we're taking over, and I know from the discussions that we had last time, that we'd be looking at making this a park, something beneficial for the citizens. But again, the beneficiaries of it would be the people that already live there, that already own it, that are already responsible for maintaining it. If we were to create a park, I don't know what kind of complications, and I didn't hear anybody bring this up before, but what kind of complications we're looking at potentially of, okay, so let's say the less of the village wants to go over there and use that park as far as parking or things of that nature. Um, I don't know if that affects anything or not. But that's just something else to think of, but it is now all the property. Now granted, they're opening that door by doing this, so they, they have to accept that, but.
The, the, the new zoning code prohibits the payment of fees in low green space. It insists that green space be provided in all new developments. So, um, I can think of just two right now off the top of my head, Copperfield and the Commons. But anything new coming in, the, the part of the zoning approval process would require green space. And, you know, the situation, you know, it, it may mushroom on us, I just don't know.
I think it's something wonderful that we could aspire to have a park in every neighborhood. Um, I'm saddened that we all find it more of a liability than an opportunity. But, um, with that said, I assume that their interest in getting rid of this, cause I've seen it's costing them approximately, let's assume three thousand dollars a year. That's their interest, that's not going anywhere. In other words, if we design a year from now that we wanna put a park there and we have the manpower to do so, I don't imagine that opportunity will have passed us by by turning it down now. Um, but personally, I would love to see a park in every neighborhood. And again, I see that as an opportunity, not a liability. But, um, I think this is something that will be open to us in years' future, so, and if we can afford it, I think it's something we should do.
I agree with you, I mean, if you have that city, I don't, places where gross.
Yeah, Dublin has one after every neighborhood.
Right, one in every neighborhood and they're connected somehow, and that could be a way we could.
Sure, and those are the kind of things that prospective homeowners are gonna look at to determine whether they want to come and live here, assuming we ultimately get another development going. What do we do in other neighborhoods? There are savvy folks who will do just that one, determine where to live.
That makes sense, the, the issue is, you know, right now we've got a tight budget, maybe it'll be different a few years from now.
I don't think it's something that won't be there next year and the, and the following year. They're not gonna turn in, they're not gonna put a house on there, you know, it's gonna stay there.
What happened to Carriage, can that happen in this situation?
As far as, well, I don't think it's separately, I don't think it's a separate parcel like what was in Carriage. Carriage, that, that was a separate parcel, and this isn't. So if they let it go to seed, that's a problem amongst the homeowners.
And a way to avoid this going forward is to put it in deeds?
As far as what, I mean, this is, I mean.
Within zone, when we were talking about.
Well, with the plats, I mean, as far as what's happening over there, I don't think that's a problem. I think they've got that one perfectly done, it was, it was, uh, determined to be green space. I think what you're concerned about is where you have homeowners associations abandoning that, and yeah, we, you know, if they were to choose to abandon it and all of a sudden now this green space that we had originally platted now just goes to seed in some nasty field that nobody takes care of, and then it becomes a zoning issue. And then all of a sudden now we have to charge back to the homeowners. So I think there are things that we've talked about, I think in PMZ a little bit about, um, as far as making, uh, putting protections in place to make sure that, um, there is some governance of those green spaces uh, by these homeowners associations that can't be, that can't disappear. And that they agree that each property owner within that subdivision is essentially kind of a shareholder of that parcel. And so that if we have to go in as a village and have to clean it up and maintain it, then it's gonna be charged back, you know, pro rata to each of the residents within that, uh, you know, even if the homeowners association goes defunct, everybody that lives within that subdivision, every parcel owner is going to have to pay a fee or a portion of whatever the maintenance costs are, cause we have to recoup our costs.
That's the, I mean, it's already in our code that we want that green space in developments, it's important to us. There's how it's handled is what we need to do.
I think the thought was is that the homeowners association would be, you know, excited and proactive and do something. And, uh, that's not been the case.
So now we need to keep an eye on, in planning its ownings. Mine's that going forward, how we need to change that so that it doesn't become an issue like this is.
And that's a matter of something that we'd have to discuss with any developer and the negotiation of what covenants that they leave behind when they turn the homeowners association, when they turn it over to a homeowners association from when the development and construction is complete.
Right.
I think, um, I can't remember whether it was Oak Grove or Eagles Landing when we were looking at the, um, uh, deed restrictions and stuff that, that included homeowners association. I think we started specifying that it had to be a property management organization, not, uh, a grassroots homeowners association which could go defunct.
Right.
Uh, it would be a professionally managed organization that would have the ability to, to make sure, uh, things were enforced.
Okay, so what's your pleasure with this specific property?
Not yet. I'd say thanks, but not yet.
I agree.
So, now.
I will be in touch with them.
I want to do that this morning. Right, thank you.
Did we get a hold of Scott here regarding the lines by the?
We did, did you have another meeting with him for Eric, Eric's still got things.
I spoke with, I put, uh, Mr. Travis from Frontier in touch with, uh, Mr. Medici. They did have a conversation, they've not come to a resolution yet, um, but they are discussing it.
Catch point of course, this is the same Frontier we want to grant from.
Yeah, it's still. Um, okay. And I'm just forgetting in the moment, so I'm asking for a refresher. I think Park was going to talk about bicentennial park issue and look at something long forward.
Well, they were, we were supposed to be in touch with the company X.
We, we did get in touch with Outdoor FX. I, I had a phone call and an email to him in late last week, yeah, late last week and, or early last week and have not heard back from him, so it's not going anywhere.
Well, if you can skim on that, I'm trying to touch basically. Christmas seven o'clock, it's very visible that there's some matrix issues over there, so, major cracks, need worked on. Good, all right. I think we're at the end of the agenda, but I know that others might have some things they want to talk about.
I do. Um, as you have known from the emails that have been going around of the situation, and I feel like, uh, I need to address from our situation, um, because it's been very one-sided and that one side that you've been hearing has been incorrect. Um, in case of all of you that do not, Colleen Davis and I are opening an antique mall at one thirty-three Mortel Coffee Street. We hope to open the first of the year. Um, and on Monday, November twenty-fourth, Mr. Jordan, the village zoning officer stopped by and he informed us that we did not have the proper permits, specifically a sign and a certificate of occupancy. Well, we were just basically had our foot in the door. We didn't even have a design in mind for a sign. When you submit, uh, for a sign permit, you have to have the drawing specifications, where it's gonna be, the size. We didn't have a clue what we're gonna do. And, uh, we were not ready for certificate of occupancy because there was still paint to meet, needs to be done, counters needed to be installed. And when you apply for your certificate of occupancy, you have to do a floor plan, you have to show where everything is. And you don't apply for that until you're ready to open. He came across very forceful at that time, we didn't think much about it, he's doing his job, we passed it off. And, uh, but we went ahead and Mrs. Davis applied or and received the certificate of occupancy from the village, which we have with us, we received it on, uh, November the twenty-sixth. We were not ready to apply for the certificate of occupancy from Union County again, because we were not ready for the inspection. And we were not, knew we were not going to be open for business until after the first of the year. And it was our understanding that we did not need or should apply for the Union County permit until we were ready to open, which was and is not going to be till the first of January. It was our intentions that we were gonna have an open door and an open house for Christmas and the clock on December the sixth to introduce ourselves, talk about the shop, and show the space. We were not going to have any sales transactions. Period. It was never discussed, thus, still not needing the Union County certificate of occupancy. Then, as you all know, we received the email from Mr. Jordan on December fifth, the day before, at three sixteen P M, telling us that we were not approved to open our store on December the sixth. Um, I think you can agree that email was somewhat hostile. Um, I took it, um, very personal. I don't know why he knows both of us. He knows, knew where we were, where we were, why he didn't just call us or send us an email or stop by and say, hey, what's going on? You know, you guys don't have the certificates. And we could explain to him what was going on. I also don't understand why he felt the need to CC of all council, the village administrator and the fiscal officer. It had nothing to do, it was between the zoning office and two business owners. That was when I felt it was becoming personal. But Colleen and I are big girls. We had our big girl panties on and we just pulled them up and said, well, now what do we do? So, we realized that we were still in the right, but being council members, we didn't want to feel like we were asking for any preferential treatment. So, Mrs. Davis called the Union County Building Department to verify. She spoke with Mary Samson. She is the chief building official of Union County, who said that she was not told by Mr. Jordan that there was a Plain City event going on and was also not told that it was just an open door situation to promote the business that no sales transactions would take place. Thus, again, not getting the entire picture from Mr. Jordan. She gave Mary Samson, gave Mrs. Davis a verbal permission to be open for the event as long as sales were not conducted. I don't know why he felt the need to contact her with the incorrect information. Again, it's not our place to ask. We don't want preferential treatment. And again, we don't know why he didn't call us, email us or stop by. So we sat there and we talked for a while. And we wanted to make sure we were doing the right thing, not overstepping the bounds because, you know, we do not want or expect any preferential treatment, but we do expect things to be fair. So then, Mrs. Davis made a phone call to the village solicitor, Mr. Lafayette, and he was aware of the email but had no other information from Mr. Jordan. And he, Mr. Lafayette, specifically stated that he could not show any special treatment towards two council members' business. And of course, Mrs. Davis said that we don't expect any. And then Mr. Lafayette called Mr. Jordan. Mr. Lafayette called us back, spoke to Mrs. Davis, stating that Mr. Jordan said that he received a letter from Union County about our situation and that the business was not to open. Again, he did not give Mr. Lafayette all the information, the entire picture. Since then, I have asked Mr. Jordan for, to produce that letter from Union County saying that we were not to open. He did not send it to me, so I do not know if it exists or not. But he did send me an email where he did ask the building official about our status. And quote from Mr. Jordan, it says, and this is to Mary Samson, "Question for you. Did 133 North Chalk Coffee Street get a CO to put in a business? They are having an opening there tomorrow night." And her response, and I have the emails here if you'd like to see them. Her response was, "They will be in violation of the building code by not having their CO ahead of opening to the public. It's most likely not a serious hazard where we would need to post the building, unsafe to occupy and prevent them from opening, but their insurance company could have grounds for not paying a claim if someone trips or gets injured. Nowhere does it say, 'They may not open.'" And as you, as you all received the email from him, the very last line, it says, from Mr. Jordan, again, "You are not approved to open your store on December the 6th." Now, my question is, as someone who has sat on this council and has worked many hours to try to bring a new business into Plain City, is this how a new business is treated? I don't, we do not expect any special treatment. We did not ask for it. But I think you can understand how we feel. We felt it was personal. And again, we're tough, you know. We looked into it. We followed the rules. Everything's good. But I don't like being accused of expecting preferential treatment. And now somehow today, it got leaked for a public records request. Where does that come from? I sure hope this is not the policy of the zoning office.
And you don't know that, so I would not make an accusation.
I, I, I'm not accusing anyone. I'm just saying, it had to be leaked, or else how would he know about it?
Can we, can we ask a couple of questions to clarify a few things?
Yes, you may.
Can I, can I first talk just real quick? Because I do want to clarify just one thing. I think Colleen did call me on Saturday morning and advise that she was concerned because you, obviously you guys were opening that night to allow people to come in for Christmas under the clock. And again, I, and that was corrected. I didn't know anything about what was going on other than I had received an email on Friday. When you and I talked, I did say, I'd asked you, had you talked to the Union County Building Department? And you said that you did. After you got the email, you called Mary up at the Union County. And you, and she explained to you what you, what you guys just discussed as long as you weren't selling anything, that you guys could have kind of like a soft open, so to speak. Somebody can come in and have refreshments as long as they didn't linger around and they came back out. And, and I asked if you guys had explained that to John, and I don't think you guys had talked to John. So then I got off the phone with you and I called John and I explained exactly what you explained to me. I told him that this is what Mary at the county said. I explained it to him. And that's where John said it was okay. He said, if that's okay with Union County, then it's okay with me. And that was the end of it. I just, and so then I called you back and I said, okay, this is what John said. He said it's okay if it's okay with Union County. And so that was kind of the end of it. I didn't want to give the impression that John had said no still after our conversation because he did say it was okay. And I conveyed that to you guys. But other than that...
So really, this question more for you, Paul. Well, let me just say this is just kind of the summary. It's very difficult. All of us, you know, wear multiple hats. You know, earlier, Bob gave a check to the village from UPCO, but he's also a member of council. Sometimes it's fairly hard to juggle the things that we are besides being a councilman. And you keep going back to this special treatment. And I think that's a great thing to talk about. Paul, do you normally get, as village solicitor, calls from businesses asking your legal opinion on things for, is business open? Or do you feel that they called you because they're members of council to ask whether or not they should open or not? Does every business person call you?
When I got the call Saturday morning, I didn't say, hey, where are you calling me?
Well, I mean, I mean, it does go to the fact of, can anyone call and ask Paul's legal advice on zoning issues?
I wasn't asking his legal advice. When it got emailed to all council and we've never received any zoning issues.
I got it. That's why I was wondering.
Well, exactly. And I, and my question was, why, why did this go to all of council? I don't understand why this would have gone to all council.
I forget, I forget how, how the conversation started, but I seem to recall that it was something like, does he normally send these out to other businesses? Or to, no, I'm sorry. Does he normally send this out to all council members when there's a violation? Or something to that effect. You were concerned that he had sent it out to all council. And I think the only thing that I could remember was that I do get copied on them when he is sending them out on occasion to particular people that are in violation or certainly repeat offenders that are in violation. I will get copied on any emails that he sends out or letters. But frankly, I don't necessarily pay attention to who else is copied on the email. I just look at it and say, okay, I keep track of what's being violated. So I don't know the answer to that, as to whether he does it on other businesses. Obviously, you guys being council members would know what you're getting copied on. I, you know, I didn't look back to check on that, but...
That wasn't a little odd. We never really get letters for new businesses opening. But this is one, is this a unique thing? Because two people on council are opening it and it seems not to fall.
Well, I think you just answered your own question. I mean, we consulted Paul because he's a neutral party. He knows Mr. Jordan's situation. He knows us.
I don't see why we need to turn this into blaming the victim here. I mean, they come in with a legitimate beef, in my opinion. I don't know why the tables are being turned on, whether they should or should not call Mr. Lafayette. I don't get that, John.
Well, it goes to the point. Is he the Red Rooster's attorney? Or is he the village attorney?
We didn't ask him as Red Rooster's attorney. We asked him as a partial person that knows all parties.
This is one of those areas that always seems to get, to get blurred whenever these things come up. It seems all of us, this is just an area we have to be more focused on because it is a gray area. Are you here tonight speaking as the owner of Red Rooster? Or are you here tonight speaking as a member of our council?
I can wear both hats. My, my purpose here is how a new business was treated and I hope it doesn't, this policy doesn't continue. And I asked Mr. Jordan to be here tonight and he said, no, it wasn't his job to be here. So, you know, so let me speak to this a little bit.
First of all, I don't appreciate that he, he didn't come to me. I'm his supervisor. Instead, you brought it out into a public session, making a big discussion here.
He did that when he copied all of council.
And I dealt with that. I feel like that was inappropriate. He didn't need to do that. And I've already talked to him about that.
He has forwarded things to you guys before. For instance, if you remember the issue with the apartments and the, the issue that came up there. And he contacted the building department to say that they had a retaining wall that was collapsing. And he emailed you guys, copied you guys on that. So he does do that occasionally. He used bad judgment at this time and addressed it. Well, and also in, in defense to that of not coming to you, you have been very, very pro Mr. Jordan in some instances where we have discussed things about his position and things that have happened. And I don't, I, I felt it was, it was something I needed to discuss with council.
And that's fine, but I am a supervisor, so it's not your authority to tell him to be a council.
I didn't tell him to be a council.
Or to even strongly suggest.
I asked him because I knew it would be discussed.
I'm, I'm trying to make your point.
Oh, that was a spark.
The point is of his procedure, and he's been, you know, the zoning officer for I don't know how many years, a very long time. And what he told us was wrong, that we were not allowed to open the store.
No, actually, her, her email says they will be in violation of building code
if we open to the public.
And you did. We... So, now, listen, this is communication. This is an understanding.
Can I chime in just for, let me chime in because I think I can, I'll be the neutral party here. And I think that's what comes down to, communication. John was doing his job. He got, he made an inquiry to the building department and they said that it would be a violation if you opened. Now, the communication problem was, is that he didn't have the information that you guys had. And the question is, who has to talk to whom? Should you guys have contacted him and say, hey, we are going to be open? Is it okay if we open on Saturday? Or should it have been John saying, I'm aware that you're opening on Saturday and I got to tell you not to do that? That's up for debate, but there, that's the communication gap here. Communication gap was, one side didn't tell the other side, hey, we're not actually going to be conducting business and we, let's talk to Union County and see what they have to say about it. That's where the communication gap is. So I don't think, I mean, for, for John doing what he did, sending the emails to all of council, that's a separate issue. The way I look at it is, was he doing his responsibilities? And anybody opening up a business of enforcing zoning, that's doing his job. The communication gap is, and where the, the communication broke down and the reason we had a problem, I think, or the reason why I think it's perceived that we've got a problem is because both sides were not talking in the same language.
I guess that's where my question comes. Does he always email? From a council person, does he always email or does he call?
Didn't you get a letter? Didn't you get a letter from him?
We got a letter initially.
An initial letter, telling you what the steps were.
And that's when I went in and, and I talked to him. I sat down and talked to him about the application with my phone number. So the second time, when he gets the other one, you know, picking up the phone so that that communication breakdown doesn't happen and the discussion can happen, I think might be better for all business ongoing. From a council person, where we're trying to get new businesses to come in, it would be best rather than, because miscommunication can happen in emails.
And we did have a certificate of occupancy from him.
Well, you had a...
So our issue was from him. Whatever.
Zoning compliance means that you're opening a business in a business district.
Right.
That's a certificate of zoning compliance. Only the building department can give occupancy because that's more the safety issue.
Okay.
John's job is to save the zoning.
So to us, the next step was dealing with Union County.
Right.
Which we had sent our application. We just did not have everything completed yet.
And John has to wait to get that before we can permit businesses.
So the certificate of occupancy, it's, the overall reason for having it is for the safety of the people that would come into the building, right?
Right, because that's who the building department determines. It's structural integrity.
So that has, whether or not you take money or not that night, whether, that, that has no bearing on whether, how has it changed the safety issues if you don't take money that night?
I think he has to talk to the building department.
Yeah, I mean, is the roof going to not collapse because you don't take money?
Apparently, the building, uh...
I don't know how that, how a soft opening is any different.
Well, it's going from an office to a retail. So it's a change of occupancy from an office to a retail.
Yeah, I mean, I don't understand the distinction either, but apparently they, they thought that there was a valid distinction and that's why they said it was okay for them to do it, so...
And something she didn't do, which surprised me when I heard how we were given a temporary permit. And that even though we didn't have that final piece, she gave us a temporary.
And again, that would have been helpful if she had communicated. Well, after, after knowing that she had sent an email to John saying, this is going to be in violation. If she had subsequently talked to you and said, okay, I'm going to, oh, now I understand that there's additional facts maybe John doesn't know. I'll send John an email. And I'm not saying that's necessarily her fault, but again, it's a communication issue. You've got her saying now it's okay when she previously told him that would be a violation. You've got John and you guys not necessarily communicating on what type of opening or what discussions you've had with the county. So, I mean, again, I don't think it's something that...
All of that sounds plausible and impersonal, except the one fact that the, the media was involved in this. That's the one thing that is, leads me to believe that there is some other motive in this. Absent that issue, I hear everything you say and it makes perfect sense that it could have just been each other not communicating facts to each other. But the fact that the media was involved, that lends me to believe that there were some other motives.
By whom?
I don't know.
Oh, well, then, how can we address it?
I'm not suggesting we can. But it doesn't make sense. It doesn't, it doesn't fit neatly into that puzzle, though.
Well, when you've come up with the answer, we can address it, but until then, it's a, it's a schmear.
Well, I was throwing it out there for, schmear. Schmear is, would be directed at some individual. I didn't direct it at anybody. I'm throwing it out there as something we should think about if you care. If you don't, then take it for what it, what it's worth.
Another thing that complicates the whole night is, you know, some businesses actually do sell stuff and in some businesses, it's more an open house for Christmas under the clock. So it is one of those hybrid nights where it, it, there are legitimate businesses that just say, come in and have some cocoa and look around. And there are some, you know, like the Grub House are selling pizza that night. So it's just an interesting night anyway. It's a weird night of a mixture of hospitality and commerce, which was unique in itself, I guess. So what did we decide, Leslie? Did you feel like...
No, I just felt like I needed to respond, let you know what our situation was and that we were not in the wrong, where it came across that we were in the wrong. And we were doing everything by what Union County said we could be doing.
Well, it is unfortunate that it all came down the way it did. And again, like Paul said, I don't want to blame Mary, but there's obviously a communication breakdown somewhere there. And, and as I said, I have talked to John about emailing all council. That was inappropriate. And we have talked to him about phone calls over emails. That absolutely makes sense.
I appreciate that.
And I guess if, if we're talking to the general public who may be looking at this, and business owners that may be viewing this on YouTube, if you were a business owner and you intend to open your business for something similar to what you guys did or something, when you don't have your certificate of occupancy, make sure you communicate with the zoning inspector. And to John, which John is aware of now, if he has information and he knows you're going to do something like that, it's easy to pick up the phone and make a call and find out what's going on. And I think that's the easy solve. If that had occurred on Friday, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about it right now.
All right. Anything else, counsel? Entertainer motion.
Motion to withdraw.